One-on-one topic, Texas, this is another meeting subject to the open meeting laws in the state of Texas. This is also a Zoom meeting, so if anybody is watching this via Zoom, there's a way that you can ask questions. We'll get to the public forum. We do have a forum president tonight. At this point in time, I want to ask Mike Kidd to lead us in our pledge, followed by Pastor Josh Burns to lead you to deal with our implications.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, by pleads allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather today, tonight, in this place. We thank you for all that transpires here. We thank you for these men and women who are offering their time to better our, our city. And we thank you for the opportunity to call you our God. We thank you that we can come present anything before you and know that you are for us and therefore nothing can be against us. And so, God, I pray a hedge of protection around these men and women as they do their job. These men and women of law enforcement and firefighters who are always out there to protect us. God, I pray that you would just protect them. Lord, we lift up and we think about Burleson tonight and this cop and the family who have undergone such a tragedy. And God, we know that only by your care and your watchful eye that they can recover and grieve and go through this process. So, we lift them up to you knowing that you will do good by them. We thank you for everything that you've given us of life and living life abundantly. And we pray that you would be honored and glorified in all that's done this evening in Jesus' name.
All right. You guys want to hear us talking about our pledge and all the other stuff? Would you like to weigh in on the proclamation?
Let you put me in on your budget.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all to put themselves behind the wheel, become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating the motorcycle and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they deserve. Now therefore, I, Joe Hoddard, Mayor of the City of Joshua, Texas, can hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one as motorcycle safety awareness month in the city of Joshua. First of all, our law reasons to do the part to make it safe and aware of this in our, you know. Why do you not have to say number?
Come on, let's take a picture. Thank you all for having us.
My next proclamation, on this national day of prayer, Americans reaffirm that prayer guides and strengthens our nation. And we express with humility and gratitude our firm reliance on the protection of the divine products. As one nation under God, we share a legacy of faith that sustains and inspires us and a heritage of religious liberty. Today, we're joined together and lift up our hearts remembering the words of one John five fourteen that tell us when we ask anything according to its will, he hears us. From our earliest days, our dependence upon God has brought us to seek his divine counsel and unfailing wisdom. Our leaders have often encouraged their fellow citizens to seek wisdom from God and have recognized God's power to lead our nation ahead to brighter days. When the prospects for our independence seemed bleak, General George Washington proclaimed the national day of fasting, humiliation, and prayer, humbly to subjugate the mercy of the Almighty God. Following the devastating destruction of the Civil War, President Lincoln delivered his second inaugural address and invoked the power of prayer to bind up the nation's roots. And more than one hundred years later, President Reagan noted our long reliance on prayer throughout our history, writing that through the storms of revolution, civil war, and the great world wars, as well as during times of disemission and disarray, the nation has turned to God in prayer for deliverance. Today, as much as ever, our prayerful tradition continues as our nation faces challenges in combating the coronavirus. During the past year, our heads have found places outside of our typical houses of worship, whispering in silent solitude for God to renew our spirit and carry us through unforeseen and seemingly unbearable hardships. We will remain connected through prayer and a common reassurance that God will lead us through the life's many battles. In the midst of whose trying and up pressing many times, we are reminded that just as those before us turn to God in their darkest hours, so must we seek his wisdom, strength, and healing hand. We pray that he comforts those who have blood wounds, heals those who are sick, strengthens those on the front lines, and reassures all Americans that through trust in him, we can overcome all obstacles. In nineteen eighty-eight, in Congress, a public law one hundred dash three zero seven, as amended, called on the president to issue each year a proclamation designated the first Thursday of May as national day of prayer, for which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and mediation in churches and groups and as individuals. Now therefore, I, Joe Hoddard, Mayor of the City of Joshua, can hereby proclaim the first Thursday of May as national day of prayer. All right, work session, first on the business is review and discuss questions, join into the budget for my answer statements for March twenty twenty-one. Does anybody have any question? Questions? Next is discuss and review the fire marshal's office policies and procedures. Keep it brief. Fire's policy, so you can say, I don't really have any comments on what area of the most recent questions. I'll have after they've done the reviews. You ready to everything?
Yes, sir. I've reviewed these policies and procedures. Looking over and I see us establishing another police portion of the city of Joshua. And I, I don't agree with that. I said all along that we don't need more police. I've got no problem with the fire marshal having the authority to do these investigations. I have a problem with him carrying a weapon, which in the state of Texas, they pretty much do anyway. There's nothing in this policy procedure manual that outlines or sets up guidelines or rules as to what his specific responsibilities and duties are. I don't think our fire marshal should ever be in a high speed pursuit. I, 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 there's all kinds of things in here that I don't think a fire marshal needs to be doing. I don't think a fire marshal should ever be called upon from our police department to go serve warrants. You know, and if anything, he calls the police department to back him up when he serves his warrants if he's going to be doing our code enforcement. You know, this, this just establishes a police department. You've got in here to hire deputies and other officers. What are other officers? That's required by T close that policy. I don't know if you read the policies in detail. If you will notice, those policies such as the pursuit, it says at the very beginning that the fire marshal's office is a court of justice, general court of justice, is not engaged in vehicle pursuits. There's only one allowance for that. And that says an officer views a violent, selling, in other words, an assault, someone shoots someone, something like that. They're allowed to pursue that person. And if you read the policy, it gives parameters that they're allowed to do that. They're allowed to do that until they are either reached the city limits or they have marked vehicles taken over the pursuit and then drawn down. I, I don't want to have a peace officer, that's what these marshals are, they're licensed peace officers. I don't want to have a peace officer in a position where he witnesses something like that. And then, a policy cannot take action. And I don't think that we would want the city in a position like that potentially absorb their liability where someone could have done something, a peace officer can did not do anything and then it became numb. And I don't want our peace officers feeling like they can't take action to stop a violent crime. They are peace officers after all. I think that would very much weigh on their conscience if they weren't allowed to. They're not allowed to do pursues in any other situation whatsoever. Okay. Why, why do you leave your, your new logo or for fire marshals logo, what happened when police saw it? Because they are police. They're not police like prison police. They're law enforcement. They have to be identified as such. And why would this be more to state enforcement? Does T close require the word police be on that badge? It requires that they have a badge of office. And as a law enforcement officer, easiest description you can put on something like that is the word police. That's understood by the program. Again, I, I, I just, going through the list of policies and stuff, I don't see anything that gives me a job description, a, a, a list of what his duties, responsibilities, and so on is going to be. And, and there again, you know, I, I, I just, I question this. I, I question this all along. When we originally started this out, we need this so he can carry a gun on duty. That's, that's the whole approach of this, this starting with. And like I said, if he's already a peace officer, which he is, he, he is a sworn officer in the state of Texas. He can carry his weapon just pretty much anywhere in the state of Texas except for a few minor exceptions. When he's off duty, on duty, or whatever. I, I just don't, I, I, I'm just having problems accepting that we need to set up another police organization in this, in the city. We're not setting up another police organization. You'll read those policies carefully. The Christian policy is required for the T close. Well, I'm reading through all these policies. Every policy in here is required by T close. Not only nine, there are only nine policies. Were those, was those the first times, like the domestic violence protective work policy? Is that required by the first nine policies in your, in your book that I gave you? Okay, so policy seven thirteen, seven points. Seven fifteen is to be pursued, seven thirteen is domestic violence. Four seven, part-time marshals. Twelve one, property evidence management. You know, again, establishing this has been done. Don't we already have that in our police department? Can we not cross, you know, can, can we not use what we have as our property evidence lockers? And, and people handle that for the fire marshal when we have to hire somebody new to do it? The T close license requires us to keep evidence for fire investigations. That's, that's how that's there. I, I, I understand that. If we're licensed separately, then there's no reason that we need to be co-maining evidence in our agency and that agency. Other, other than saving costs? Well, it's not really a, a large cost associated with what we would need to do. If you've got to have an evidence manager, don't, don't you have to hire somebody to do that specific job? That is the question. Also states a fire marshal is the evidence. Okay, I did not read that in here, so, okay. It's, it's in the policy. Uh, part-time and other peace officers, again, that's a T close requirement. All right, even though there's no intent right now to hire, okay? And computer electronic equipment usage. Is that, that's? That's not a requirement, but that goes along with anything that we would be doing. Okay, you'll use a studio recorder and so forth. Okay, under, under that specific policy, section nine, that's paragraph A, sub-paragraph two, who determines what data is identified as not necessary? I have the type of policy that had context, which we didn't know. Uh, they're, they're talking about that after ninety days, uh, any, uh, data that's determined to be not necessary is deleted. Right. Who, who makes that determination? Are there certain rules from what's considered not necessary? Rules of evidence for, for video, for example, what he has to keep traffic stops or that because we would really not do. He has to keep traffic stop videos for his time there. He can keep it forever if he wants to. The, the videos that we're referring to that are really not necessary is if we go out and make contact with somebody over their high grasses weeds. Say, hey, we need to know your high grasses weeds. We make a video of that contact because we don't want somebody to come back later accusing us of yelling, screaming at people, whatever. That would be a video that's, there's no statutory requirement for us to maintain that particular video. So, we need to just keep it long enough that we're sure that we're not going to get a complaint from them. So, so ninety days is pretty standard, pretty much a standard length? Pretty much. I mean, you could do it as long as you want or as short as you want in that particular instance. Okay. When it is. In that paragraph, um, during, during the, the code enforcement encounters, this, I guess that's the best word to use for it or whatever. I would like to understand and see if, if you want to do this, that the fire marshal have that, you know, be required to have that body cam on as soon as he exits the vehicle. In other words, turn it on before you get out. And as you're approaching, so that anything that transpires once he leaves that vehicle is recorded. If he's in the vehicle and interaction starts, it comes on immediately. You know, uh, I, I would like to see that as part of a policy that is written in the policy. Okay, I, I did not pay that in here. So, uh, that, that needs to be done. Does the citizen have to be notified that the encounter is being reported? Okay. In, uh, paragraph B, define until incident is complete. What's, what's the definition of a complete incident? You know, the contact is broken. Okay. I'm just, I, I still have severe questions about this. I might have the policies were all set up. Mike said I had to have those few questions about it. But I'm, I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with, with setting up a new police agency. And, and I know you're not, it's not a police agency, it's a law enforcement agency. And, and I've seen too many abuses from other cities from that department. And I, I just don't agree with it. So, that's, that's just me. And I just have to do you my assurance and word that that's not going to happen. You know, but I know that's all I can give you at this point. But as with the response calls dropping to zero, when I said that that would probably happen too, uh, I gave you my word of that. And I'm asking you to take me in on my word of this. That's all we got. So, uh, and like I said, your words give a big cheat. You, you told me this was going to happen and it happened a lot quicker than we even told you it was going to happen. So, I, I understand your word is good. But none of us have, first of all, none of us can see down, down the road, six months, six weeks, six days, six hours. We, we can't see down the road. You know, we've just got to be very careful because I do not want to see the city of Joshua end up with a, a fire marshal's department that ends up being out of hand. Out of control. And I, I just, that's, I've had negative things about fire marshals and overstepping the bounds of their authority. That's why I said there's no, I got no job description. I got nothing that sets what those bounds are in front of me. Now, Mr. Peacock told me this evening that there are procedures already and things already in place that limits all this stuff. And, and we've already got that set up and everything. I would like to see a copy of that, please. Sure. So, there is a job description, pretty much, I don't know. I, I'd love to see, I'd, I'd love to see, see the policies, procedures, the, which I've got the policies and procedures. I'd like to see where in our city charter or rules or whatever, it limits what his authority and his area of responsibility is going to be in the job description. And, and I know, I know you probably didn't have time to read these policies per se. But I read every one of them from front to back. Well, then, then you probably saw the highlighted texts, the man of spirit specifically, uh, limit the, the powers of the fire marshal's services or anything. I don't think my topic had any highlights in it. Not highlights, so all text, I'm sorry. There's quite a few places in there, specifically like in the background of the pursuit policy. For several areas with the Texas law, specifically stating that the fire marshal's office does not. Yeah, you can make pursuits except from the witness and file, though. And it is, that is anything like that. Yeah, all of those policies have similar language. So, so that's, that's what those were, this is what's limiting what we're doing here. Exactly. Okay, I, I did not understand it as I read through it. I just thought they were bold because they had to be bold for someone. No, no, those inserted by me, because we're not in the, those policies, but it's on the, this is police, these best practices. I didn't write all of that policy. Oh, come on, Steve, you're not good. I'm not, not that person that comes up with that kind of stuff. There are a lot of people who do that, but I, I tweak all the terms. Right. I tweak them to, to customize them for our situation and to insert specific limits on what we would be doing. Because those are written for police departments. And, and again. That would never have been a nice explanation that had been handed out with this. Right. And to me, it's amazing that T close only draws nine, which is if a policy wants to get licensed. To me, I think there's no policies in that, that same, that same department of nine policies applies for every law enforcement made in San Texas. I would think they require every one of the policies in that group. And to me, not having a policy on something is more dangerous than having a policy that says that you can't, can't do certain things. Because then that individual goes out without, without guidance and has their own sort of things, which I don't benefit from. Thank you.
Scott, also, let me, if I can clarify one thing. But part of what you're asking for from us that sets up what their duties and obligation is, is in the ordinance that, that you'll also go over tonight. Some of that stuff, and I believe Terry is checking some of that is established by state law to what fire marshals can and cannot do. So, and most of, I, I think a lot of what you're asking for too, that's in here, is just what y'all talking about, some of those highlighted things that, that kind of lay that stuff out. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what you're asking for. Okay?
To read through this, sounds to me, which we don't find, does any one of us up here know what this, the fire marshal is? What's, what's the standard that you use to wrap this to set up the department's new site?
Well, there's a job description for the fire marshal, which is not in there. It states what it's supposed to do. There is a policy in here on investigation, fire investigations that outlines how fire investigations conduct.
There's a policy in here, but what did you write that to?
What did I say again?
You got to have a standard from the state saying.
Yes.
Fire marshal's going to do this, that, and this. And you write to the policy to say how you're going to do it.
Right, well, those policies are based on the Texas Police Chiefs Association best practices. That's the templates that I use for the policies and I modify them to fit our specific situation here and as fire marshals. The fire marshal's job description that exists now was written before I came here. Uh, it's, it seems to be pretty generic, uh, pretty much what most fire departments would have is a job description for a fire marshal. So, that's, the best answer I can give you, John.
So, right now, is there a standard from the state that says fire marshal's duties will do this? And we write to Sash Brothers or Frank?
You're talking about a specific state statute?
Like the contractors and stuff, doing all this, government sets out like Council nine thousand one quality standards to do their business. They have to write a procedure on each subject on how they're going to control. And that's how they're obligated to do it.
Would that be more simple or?
How, how would you do that?
If, if I could add one thing, that in the ordinance we have before you, we have before us tonight, the duty to the fire marshal. The duties to the fire marshal are explained in the ordinance and it goes back to the code of criminal procedure, the arson investigator, which is basically what the fire marshal is. So, it's included in the ordinance that refers back to the state statutes that address it. Specific things are included in the, in the job description for the fire marshal because obviously a fire marshal can do more than just be an arson investigator. Then you can do other, other, you know, other duties, uh, you know, that, that, that may be required. So, I guess my response would be, there are, there are peace officers under, under state law. Such arson investigators have to be a peace officer, be an arson investigator. And then, the, you kind of refer back to those applicable state laws in the ordinance that before you. Did the job description have anything that would be in excess of what's, what, what additional duties that may be given to that position? And is that cheap a fair destination?
So, I, I guess I didn't quite understand. Is there a standard that go by to wrap the signature statement?
Like what he's asking, is there a state fire marshal's policy that says this is what a fire marshal? The, the answer is no. No, I mean, it's a little bit like a police officer.
Everybody can write their own.
You have your own policies, but, but you, you're, you should, because of liabilities, you should follow the best practices for, for, for police officers, for fire, fire marshals, et cetera. But for example, there's a very broad definition of, of a peace officer in statutes. State law tells me you enforce the law. But that includes a lot of different things. That's why you have very, very detailed policies and procedures that, that, that goes, that go further. There's not a state law that says, here are the policies and procedures for our police department or fire marshal officer, nothing like that. Because that kind of gets way down the weeds on, on certain things. And so, so no, there is no state law that says, here's a pursuit policy for all police officers. Here's a, here's a juvenile arrest policy. There, there, they'll save all that, that, that.
You see where it comes from, right? We don't, we don't know, so we read it. If it sounds good, so we sign up on it. It may or may not be correct.
Yeah, no, I, I get, I understand the question and the premise of it, but there's, a lot of this stuff, I think, even with, with law enforcement. And I'm, I'm not a police officer, mind you, but most of the, the policies and procedures that you find are based on some sort of standard, whether it's national or state, like these are the Texas Police Chiefs Association standards. There's a Texas Fire Marshals Association. There's a state fire marshal. All of those agencies have guidelines that you adopt to fit your specific need. And I think that's what we've done here. Other things for the fire marshal, aside of arson investigation would be building inspections and, and, uh, you know, fire alarm inspections and fire suppression system inspections. There's a lot of other things that they do. This is just one other aspect of, of what happens.
Mike? Yes, sir. In, in the ordinance itself, it states that the fire marshal shall carry out those duties enumerated in the International Fire Code, including but not limited to the inspection of all new commercial construction. So, they're using the International Fire Code as, as the guidelines, the basis to build everything on. And then we develop our specific policies based on state law.
Correct.
What the city's responsibilities and so on. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, you okay?
Did I get you there?
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right. Next is discuss pursuit directional proposed five year capital improvement plan, Mike? Okay, we have the, uh, plan before you. Some of the highlighted areas that you have are the totals. This is a continuation of the plan started a few years back. And, uh, we, there's a few adjustments in here. What you guys are seeing, that's the final number, uh, that makes you take a deep breath. Those are all of the street, uh, have all the street numbers in there as well. And so I, I think, um, to simplify this, so that it doesn't look like that we're planning to spend six or seven million dollars this year. Separate the streets out of this in the budget when you get it. Uh, it'll still be in the CIP, but it's not going to be listed in public works and it's going to be listed as a separate total. Cause that's, that's about seven million dollars in itself. The other thing that you're going to see in the final budget or in the proposed budget for the next fiscal year is, uh, for example, if, if it calls for a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, that's something that we're probably going to finance. And so what you'll see is the annual payment for that, not that five hundred thousand dollar number, wherever that number is. And so this, this number will change, but this is, this is almost the same as adopted last year, uh, just pushing things out. Uh, there's very little new spending in it. Uh, with the exception of some adjustments that we're going to be making in animal control. Then I'm not sure we'll end up here anyway. That, we may actually do that this year. You'll get more on that in the coming months, but you're not, you're not seeing much in here that wasn't in there last year, other than some of the streets and the, the three point four on the street for the street bonds are in here. That's only in here because part of this will be carried out. All those streets won't be finished this fiscal year, so some of this will carry over. We're just not sure what that amount will be, so I'll let the whole total. Other than that, it's, uh, pretty much it's kind of along the same lines as been in the last couple of years.
With the, uh, increase in the construction cost and so on, uh, is the bond and street projects, are we going to have to make any adjustments on any of those?
Uh, I don't know. Those have not gone to bid yet. We are seeing construction numbers significantly higher than this time last year. Costs of asphalt and materials has significantly increased. And we're still going back. We're making some of those final adjustments to things that we took out. With some of the fencing and some of the other areas all down along, uh, Caddo Road or Santa Fe, whatever you want to call it. Uh, we're trying to get that stuff ready, um, to go to bid. We should be doing that. I would say probably the next four or six weeks. I believe we're still on track for that. Once we get those bids back, then we'll know what that number is. We're going to bid the first two projects, which is Santa Fe, or Caddo and Fourth Street. Uh, Main Street, we're going to hold back as the final of that project because we're still waiting to get a look at what Jason's doing with their land. They're bringing a new twelve inch water line down Main Street. And so we don't want to get in there and redo all that, only to have that come up and put that in. So we're working with them. The engineers are talking with one another and we may even actually bid those projects together. Uh, but, but that will, that'll be probably the one that carries over. Also, there's one other thing I want to point out to you in here. Chief Griffin has removed, I'm sorry, Griffin, Griffiths. Uh, there was talk for the last several years about an aerial device within the fire department. And he has removed that projection for now. I think that there's some other things that need to come ahead of that. And so what, what that truck has been replaced with would be a tanker or a tender, as they call it, which will serve kind of as the one we have now. I think that once fourteen, fifteen years old is ninety-two or ninety-three model. Yeah, so it's been around a while. The, the pump rating is gone on it and this new one will carry much more water, still be able to be used as a, an engine as well, but, but it'll carry quite a little water on it. That's the only change that's been made as far as any significant piece of equipment. The amount of money hasn't changed much because we were talking about a used device anyway and not, you know, the new aerial trucks, a million and a half dollars. And so we're going to hold off on that, uh, apple for a few more years and get this tanker up and running first. That's the only significant change.
Uh, on, on that, is that something that, that we can approach the ESD for assistance on?
We can approach them for anything. Uh, it's something that we can talk about whether or not they, there's been talk before about the ESD sponsoring equipment or helping offset equipment costs. Um, if it's something that can be used in multiple areas, that, that is a conversation that I can certainly have with, uh.
Tinder could be used anywhere, right?
Yeah, it, it can go anywhere. And we're not the only ones that have one. Um, but it, it would be something that could be used in other areas. So, you know, like I said, we can have that conversation. We haven't had it yet. Uh, we will have it, um, and we'll test, see what they say. We're, we're, we're going to, we're going to offer a few things with, with some of the things that they've got going on. We do have a very good relationship with the ESD. And so, you know, I, I think as things get better, that all that will continue for, not only for us, but from all the departments.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chief. The ESD is sponsored, right? We're the sales tax election. That passes, we're anticipating maybe as much as three million conditional dollars. For them, they definitely would be willing to, to help purchase apparatus if that happens.
So, so the ESD is now going to get part of the, the money increase our sales tax?
No, it's to be, here is the, did currently have the sales tax. We've already got, they could be in accounting.
Yeah, on our, our pay tax. We already paid the ESD tax, then it will increase the ESD tax.
No, 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 not on your promise.
Sales tax on.
There was, if you ordered something, man, it's like you're paying six hundred now, you'll pay that. Anybody else have any other questions?
I had a question about it, just in the sense that we need to really be thinking closer to current times when getting some of these streets fixed and, and not, not pushing so much off. We're going to really have to focus, I believe, over the next two, three, maybe five years, but we need to get it done quicker than we do waiting. We've got some, we've got some bad streets, not to mention some development that's, that's happening that's we're, we're pushing ourselves behind the curve and behind, I believe, behind an eight ball if we don't get ahead of this, this thing and, and get some things proactively done. Plus I believe, um, that it will help us for future developments if, if, uh, if that stuff, you know, if they're looking at, at doing something and we start doing proactively, getting, getting streets up to and building our infrastructure. We're going to have to really seriously think about that on these, on these budget talks to, to try to push more money towards our infrastructure. You know, and, and really, really tighten our belts down.
There, there are some things coming that I hope in the next, the next couple of, of council meetings will have more information on that. Um, some funding that'll be available for.
I'm really, we're really seeing a lot of things going on and that's the major question that a lot of people have and concerns a lot of people have and I've got. You know, I think we're, we're falling a little bit short so far. So we need to really work hard at trying to get.
Like I said, we've already been talking about some of the funds that we're going to be getting with these streets. Another thing that will actually be approved into that is that all new residential development will require concrete streets. So before we've had some of the asphalt, we're almost getting behind an eight ball there, but now looking at concrete streets, then the new subdivision, we shouldn't be ever worried about those for a while because a concrete street will last a long, long as the asphalt. So that's going to be another cog in the wheel that will help us in getting some of these things coming up, which are right. We got to get on this side of it.
Yeah. So kind of going along with what Mike just said. I've been thinking for quite a while and I, you know, there is something that I think that we could do. Obviously, we'd have to all sit down because it's going to be pretty extensive playing. I would like to see at some point if we could have an infrastructure fund, if we could pull, like I know that the, the title, the title EDC right now, or share a half a percent says that. If we could reduce that about to where they share a quarter of a percent and the other half percent that's left over goes to an infrastructure fund. I mean, what did, right here, I mean, we've got, I mean, I live here, but every road in this town is about needs to be touched. Uh, we're so far behind.
Yeah, but the asphalt streets and especially the ones that are not curved. The water is, is a big issue. We, we've had almost two million dollars in damage from the freezing, freezing weather this year. Um, and so that's a problem. And you've got infrastructure failures and, and quite a number of things. But we, that's one of the things that has been tossed around is looking into that would, that would require, uh, an election to, to offset that, but that's one of the things that's been talked about. But we've got a, we've got a, well, we've got to figure out, uh, a couple of things within each of those groups and how that would look, if that is an option that we're exploring.
And the other thing we bumped up last time was that we're reviewing our permit pieces. If we can add something into your permit, that will carry the, yes, we're going to cover the streets. So if the new people come in, they're actually going to play for some of the infrastructure, they're going to use it. I like to choose that one, get that.
Yeah, because we're going to, I mean, we're going to have to get creative about it because we, we don't have a lot of the other ways that cities generate revenue. So I like that too.
Anybody else have anything? All right, uh, anybody have any questions? Any, it's a regular session. All right, our next is public forum will be allowing citizens to speak with any topic, however, unless the audit specifically knows, but this is in the the city council, the department of the Texas Social Media Act, limits its response to responding with statements, specific factual information, reciting the city's existing policy or directing the first making the inquiry to visit the city staff without, no council deliberation is permitted. Each person will have three minutes. Alice, can you hand it?
No, sir.
And we've done the qualifications. Next on the consent agenda is to consider approval of the most in the city council meeting call on March eighteen, twenty twenty-one. And also to consider approval of the resolution, the city council designating the signatories to the city of justice financial accounts. Right now it requires two signatures, a council member and a ranking staff member. We have myself and Scott are the signatures for uh, the council. Mike is the only one right now, always for, uh, senior official. And we want to add Amber to that. So in case Mike's out of pocket, Amber would be able to, uh, sign the checks. I will be through. Now motion by Scott Timmell saying to Robert Furman, any other discussion, all those in favor? Zeroes. Uh, next, just consider take possible action on accepting the fiscal, uh, I guess would have been the nineteen slash twenty fiscal year financial report. Mike, we have one gentleman, I believe we do have him, yes, sir.
Chris, yes.
Chris, you with us?
Yes, I am. Is everybody able to hear me?
All right, can you turn it up a little bit? Are you on your end or on our end?
And then am I able to share my screen for the PowerPoint? Is that okay?
Uh, hold on a minute. We're trying to get the volume fixed first.
Okay.
There you go. That's better. Now, Alice, did you hear his question?
I did not.
He wanted to know if he could share his screen to do a presentation.
Yes.
Now, yes, sir, he can share your screen.
Sounds good. Is everybody able to see the screen then?
Yes, they can.
Okay, sounds great. Well, um, I do want to thank everybody for allowing me to have, uh, a few minutes at the council meeting to present our audit results for the September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty year end. As we go, I know it's not quite as easy as in person, but if there are any questions at all, please speak up, interrupt me. Um, don't be, don't be afraid to do that. Otherwise, of course, there is a spot at the end where you can always ask questions as well. Okay, so as, as we go through this, I'll just give a brief introduction of who the audit team was. I will go through our audit results for the twenty twenty audit. There is a, a slide that goes through our required communications. And then I do have a, a few slides of some financial results and then just a, a wrap up slide at the end as well. As far as the audit team goes, this year it was myself as the overall engagement principal, which means I did the final review and all the sign offs for the twenty twenty audit. Reba Long was our manager out of the Fort Worth office and then Edwin and Danielle were the, the other two individuals that assisted on the city's audit for this year. As far as the audit results go for twenty twenty, the audit opinion on the financial statements was an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that any entity can receive. Doesn't matter if you are a, a governmental entity, a nonprofit, a for-profit company. Unmodified is the best that you can do and that's what we strive for. As far as internal control procedures go, we do look at the city's internal controls. However, we do not provide an opinion on them, but we will identify if there are any deficiencies as part of our audit process. This year we do have the, the one significant deficiency. It's the same one that we've had since we've started working with the city. And that's just that we have a significant deficiency related to CLA assisting with the preparation of the financial statements. So nothing has, has deteriorated as far as the operations at the city for internal control processes go. It's just something that we're required to, almost included in the disclosure that we assisted with preparation of the financial statements. As far as the governance communication letter, this is a, a one slide summary of about a three or about a three page letter that the council received as well. And it, what it is, I'm just going to hit the highlights. If we start on the left-hand side as far as the overall goes. What that is, just a reminder that the purpose of the audit is to provide reasonable assurance on your financial statements and the numbers within it, not absolute assurance. We would also let you know that if we had any changes in audit scope or additional or new policies or standards this year to, to adopt as part of the audit, and we did not have any changes in scope or any new accounting policies or standards. The green column there, as we slide right on this slide, is just a reminder that there are estimates just naturally included as part of the financial statements. I've listed out the three that are the most significant for, for the city, but they are very common that we see in most of our clients as well. And our role with those estimates is really to ensure that they are reasonable, they're properly supported, and we don't have any management bias in those. And we did not have any issues with that. The purple column, as we continue to slide across this screen, is just the, we call it difficulties, but as you can see in there, there's a lot in those. No difficulties, no disagreements, no other findings that we need to report. And I've always classified that column as if I didn't speak to somebody on council before a public city council meeting, there's typically nothing to be concerned about in that, in that spot. And then as far as the, um, that last column on the right-hand side, just the other, we would let you know if we had any audit adjustments as part of our audit procedures or if we had any waived or passed adjustments. We didn't have any of those either. So it's the information that we got from, from all of the city staff was in really good shape. And then there's just that comment that we also have that separate internal control letter as well, which I already had talked about, that there's just the one control related to the financial statement preparation. As we move into the next couple of slides, just some financial highlights over the last five years, you'll see on most of these slides. The, the most notable thing that you'll see on this slide is that blue line, which is the cash and cash equivalents for the city did take a significant increase between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, but really what that just relates to is unspent bond proceeds, prompt, bond proceeds that the city is holding as of the end of the year. So nothing significantly changed as far as the operational aspects. It's really just the timing of when the bonds were issued to when the construction process is going to take place with those. Outside of that, your expendable net position, which is the, the spendable version of, of your city's net position, that increased a little bit, but that's really going to be more of a result of the operations of the, of the, uh, city instead of, uh, anything else significant that happened within the city. Otherwise, the expenses did increase this a little, a little bit last year as well, but that's going to be your standard operational increases that, that has been seen in most, most cities over the, over time as well. This slide is looking at the general fund revenues, and you can see this is a, a five year side by side comparison. And really, as you can see, that each year the city is continuing to, to grow that revenue base for the general fund. However, if you look at the percents that are on here, those, those key percents, whether it's the charges for services line, the, the sales tax, the property tax, the proportionality of those are really staying the same, which means that the, the funding of the, the city's general operations has been staying very consistent, even though it's continuing to grow, which is very good to see. This same slide looks at the expenditure side of the general fund as well. And I think really just the, the, the key on here is that, yes, total expenditures are up. This year they're up just about two hundred thousand dollars or just over two hundred thousand dollars. And really the biggest driver in that is going to be that interest in fiscal charges line within the general fund. And the biggest piece of that was.
I got a motion by Mike Kim, seconded by Richard Priest. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, and again, good job staff, if you can pass that along to Joanna and everybody else too. All right, now we'll open up a public hearing at seven thirty two regarding a request for a planned development district with associated detailed site plan on one point one five one acre tract of land located at the northwest corner of Plum Street, State Highway one seventy four, and being located within the Joshua Station overlay district with a land use designation of corridor retail C R for the purpose of constructing a Panda Express restaurant. Aaron, you may take over.
Mayor and council, a preliminary plat of Joshua Station addition was approved in two thousand and eight. There have been numerous final plats and replats of this forty-four acre tract of land since two thousand and eight, including the final plat of Lot Ten. During that time, the name of the plat for Lot Ten was changed from Joshua Station Addition to Cypress Creek Addition. Regardless, it is part of the same preliminary plat that was approved in two thousand and eight. The subject property, property is referred to as Lot Nine as per the approved preliminary plat and will be platted as such. There was a planned development district and associated conceptual plan approved for Lot Ten Cypress Creek Addition. However, other properties within this preliminary platted area as they develop need to have the P D designation and detailed site plan approved prior to construction. The property is zoned C one restricted commercial and I for industrial. The proposed development of this property is to allow for a fast food restaurant with drive-through service for a Panda Express. The proposed building will be two thousand three hundred and eighty-one square feet. The applicant will comply with most of the regulations and the zoning ordinance, however, there are requesting a waiver to the provisions of the ordinance set forth in the development standards. The zoning ordinance requires a masonry wall to be constructed between the residential uses and non-residential use. There is a multifamily dwelling complex located behind this property with an existing six foot wooden fence. The applicant is asking for a waiver to the masonry wall in order to keep the existing wooden fence in place. The same waiver was requested by and granted to the Starbucks development just north of the site. The requirements of a detailed site plan includes specific information related to engineering such as drainage and other transportation related issues. Because this property requires to be final platted, the city has agreed that these matters may be part of the final planning review process. The Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation for approval to the city council on March ninth of two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you. Is there any owner's presentation?
I believe, yes, sir, online.
Justin. Justin, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this?
I don't believe so. There was no one online. The other two that are online are for the engineering design standards.
Okay. Thank you. All right, was there? Were there any comments submitted that were in favor?
No, sir, no comments were submitted at all. No, sir.
Anybody in the audience for? All right, and we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty six. Uh, now we will discuss, consider and take possible action on ordinance changing the zoning approximately one point one five one acres of land. Plum Street, State Highway one seventy four, being lo- being located within the Joshua Station overlay with a land use designation of corridor retail planned development. Uh, I think we've just heard what Aaron said. Does anybody have any questions? I'll consider a motion, make a motion to approve.
I'll say one.
Got a motion by Robert Purdon, seconded by Scott Kimball to approve the zoning from C R to planned development district P D. Any other discussion?
Just a question. Does that include the waiver on fencing? Or is that a separate?
The motion would include it.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. We'll open up another public hearing at seven thirty seven for a request for planned development, an associated detailed site plan on one point eight five eight acres of tract of land on Davie West of Highway one seventy four. Luckily known as nine fifty-two South Broadway Street, George Kesselin Survey Abstract Number one seventy-three, the change from C one restricted commercial district to the P D planned development district and associated detailed site plan for a McDonald's restaurant. Aaron?
Yes, mayor and council, a preliminary plat of the Joshua Station Addition was approved in two thousand and eight. The subject property is referred to as Lot Four as per the approved preliminary plat and will be platted as such. This property is located within the Joshua Station Overlay District, and as properties develop, they need to have a planned development designation and detailed site plan approved prior to construction. The property is zoned C one restricted commercial. The proposed development of this property is to allow for a fast food restaurant with drive-through service for, for McDonald's. The proposed building will be forty-five hundred square feet. The requirements of a detailed site plan to include specific information related to engineering such as drainage and other transportation related issues per section ten point seven point ten of the subdivision ordinance. A traffic impact analysis is required when the number of average daily trips exceeds a thousand. Because the number of average daily trips for this project exceeds a thousand, a T I A is required. The T I A may be submitted with a final plant and pla- final plat and plans, how- however, the applicant will be responsible for making any changes to the site plan recommended by the traffic analysis. Because this property requires to be final platted, the city has agreed that these matters may be part for the final planning review process. The Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation for approval to the city council on April fifth of two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you, Aaron. Is this, you have an open for this one?
No, sir.
Uh, is there anybody in favor? Anybody to get, any comments come in?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty nine. Next items discussed, consider take possible action on this ordinance, five point one point eight five eight acres of land from restricted commercial to P D for the McDonald's. Any questions, discussion? We'll entertain a motion. I'll make the motion we approved. A motion for Robert Williams, taken by Angela Nichols to approve the change from C one restricted commercial to planned development. Any other discussion? All those in favor? I'm going to open up another public hearing at seven forty. A request to amend the thoroughfare master plan contained in the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan by removing the proposed two lane collector roadway from State Highway one seventy four to County Road ten twenty two and designating C R nine oh four west of Highway, State Highway one seventy four as a two lane collector roadway. Aaron?
Mayor and council, the thoroughfare plan was last updated in two thousand and sixteen, and it's obvious that provision must be made from, for changing the regulations as conditions change or new conditions arise. Otherwise, zoning would be confined and, and a detriment to a community instead of an asset. Periodic revision is essential if the ordinance is to establish and maintain a rational land use pattern, pattern. In this case, the two lane collector road is causing difficulty developing the area as the proposed road crosses multiple tracts of land. The city is proposing to realign the two lane collector road downward to County Road nine oh four. The Planning and Zoning Commission have made a recommendation for approval to council on April fifth of two thousand and twenty one.
Right there, uh, Cindy, I guess going this one, anybody in the audience who's in favor? Yes?
Not, what is the collective road?
Oh, it's like a little bit bigger road in this particular case, in the subdivision, go again, but the thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan calls them to have a big road, and on either end of it, it's probably, it may not ever sink. So just a little bit over is County Road nine oh four, and it's Indian Hills, we just said, let's just make that a lane road and not, you know, make somebody put in a big shit, it doesn't know where it ends up nowhere.
Al and I were wondering what the collective.
All right, close that public hearing at seven point two. And now we'll discuss and take possible action on the thoroughfare master plan contained in the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan by removing the existing two lane collector roadway from State Highway one seventy four to C R ten twenty three and designating nine oh four west of State Highway one seventy four. Any discussion? Uh, I'll consider a motion.
Motion.
And regular session. Uh, future agenda, I was first, anybody have a future agenda? We're covered. Anybody else?
Does Alice here have a document to read?